Like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council meeting for December 8th, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe will you call the roll?
Yes. Anderson.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stanton.
Can someone make a motion to excuse Councilmember Stanton?
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Stanton.
Second.
Oh. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? From cherries. Mayor's come out. What a great football parade. The, it was just a, a perfect, it was perfect. Loved, I just, I loved the mix from the high school band to the shovel brigade to, you know, all of the Santas and the peppermint, whatever they're called, the crew. Anyway, it's, it is, it's nice to be in a town that has rich tradition and also a sense of fun. So it was great. And thanks to the DPW guys for driving us in the dump truck, dump truck again. A lot of fun and for all the work you guys do and sheriff and fire district and everybody to pull that off. Jamie and April and the whole gang. So that's, uh, it's, it's great to, to live here and especially winter. Today was just, today and yesterday, just beautiful days here. So loving the winter. Ryan, your comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, and echo your comments on a, a great parade and a big thank you to, like I mentioned, the Visitors Bureau for all their work and organizing and, and all those folks who make the parade so fun. Last week, we had a big meeting to discuss Maple Street. So that, that project continues to move along. Our engineers are telling us we're still on track to, to, to go out to bid mid-December here and, uh, so, you know, it's still keeping us on track to hopefully start construction sometime in, in the spring and, and throughout 2026. So excited to get that, that project out to bid, but we went, uh, we had a lengthy meeting. We went through all of the plans in great detail and, um, and are really looking forward to, um, you know, seeing that project progress and, and how the bids come in, right? That's gonna be an awesome, big next piece for us, right? How do they come in financially? But I'm told by our engineers, they think that we'll, we'll have a pretty strong response rate, uh, given the, the magnitude and size of the, the project. Uh, Mount Bald Head restroom construction is continuing on and, and still going strong. Uh, it's like last week they finished up interior paint and flooring and next up are kind of a lot of the details that are gonna, gotta keep a, a running bathroom going, right? Electrical plumbing, countertops, uh, all that, all those good things. So, um, I know there's still some, some porta-johns out there and I, you know, they're running into some delays with, um, getting the doors, um, with some of the tariffs and things like that. So, um, I, there's some, we're having some discussion right now on whether or not, uh, you know, to put some temporary doors on there and, and, you know, give it a go and make it functional or just to kind of wait, given that it's winter and just kind of wait for the doors to come in and, and keep it secure in the meantime. So more to, more to come, uh, on that. Uh, as a reminder, finishing touches really will be in the spring anyway, but, uh, we'll be certainly on track to open for the, the main part of the season. So I'm glad she's here tonight because I wanted to mention, um, and you all took the picture last week with the commission visitor, or a couple of weeks ago with the Convention Visitors Bureau and a huge thank you to them for, um, their donation of over $20,000 towards our holiday lighting, uh, expansion. But, um, we met right before, uh, the project was kind of finalized, uh, right before Thanksgiving and we were talking about really hoping that everything was gonna be lit up in time for, uh, you know, the Christmas tree lighting and Thanksgiving and that sort of thing. And so Michelle and Scott and team, uh, worked hard with our contractors at Chip's Ground Cover and, and the electrical contractors to get things done. And so you see those expanded lights, you see things looking beautiful downtown. Uh, they've been working hard for, uh, months now, uh, and trying to, to pull together a lot of folks, including consumers in a large utility to, uh, to get here and, and power things up. And so I really want to thank them for their work. So thank you.
Great. Thanks. Questions, Brian? All right. Uh, well, you will move to, um, any changes to the agenda, additions, deletions? Okay, um, Commissioner Lovers, I see that you're on Zoom. Um, do you want to be a guest speaker or are you listening in?
Just listening in tonight. Can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
Yep. Just listening in, sorry.
If you're trying to speak. Can you speak?
Oh, Brad, oh my goodness.
I think we found the problem.
Clerk is struggling tugging a wire.
We found the, we found the problem. He's, he's on YouTube.
All right. Okay, Brad, you should, we should be able to hear you now, I think.
Yeah, I, I don't need to say anything. I'm just listening in tonight. So thank you.
So you didn't need to do anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it's, that's okay. Nice to have you with us. Um.
If I could, real quick, Mayor, I think Commissioner Lovers, he, uh, he dropped off a big tray of cinnamon rolls to City Hall, uh, here last week that were amazing, right?
We didn't know about it.
So I, you know, as folks came in, I let them know as we, as we went. So they, uh, very good, very kind of him to, to do that. They were right on.
That's great.
Yes.
We appreciate that. Um, okay, that takes us to public comment on agenda items only. Um, I don't see anybody in the room who would like to make one. Anyone online wish to make a public comment? Okay, saying none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Page three of the packet, can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda, A, B, and C as shown.
Second.
All right, so roll call vote.
Anderson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Muncie.
I have to abstain because I wasn't here at the workshop and I did not watch it.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks. Okay, staff reports. Ryan, anything to add? What you said, any questions again for Ryan? Russ?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, what, what is the timeline on the elevator left? It, it was in your report, but I didn't see. I know we were supposed to have it sometime in November, so.
Yeah, so they, they were here working hard and I think they're, they're supposed to come back for one more piece. I'm not exactly sure what that piece is. I defer to Mr. Herbert to see if he has an update.
Yeah, I, I know that, uh, public work staff, that they came and they did the majority of the work, uh, and then they, they kind of disappeared on us. So we were just gonna follow up with them and just request, um, uh, just a status update. So when we get it, we'll make sure, uh, we get it back to you.
Thank you.
Anything else for Ryan? All right, uh, Treasurers Report, uh, any questions? Appreciate the report from Muggie. Any questions on the clerk's report? Appreciate that, Jamie. Any questions on planning and zoning? Uh, DPW? Police? Engineers?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I know, I don't see John Maxxey on the line. Um, but there's an update in there about the Mount Bald Head's observation platform, a couple of comments. Um, I'd like to at some point have that come back to us for further discussion. I just want to be re, maybe it was just me that missed it in terms of what they plan to do up there. It's not just the observation platform, but there's a lot of other materials up there that probably need to be removed. So I just would like to revisit and see exactly what's being planned. If it's just, so I just want to bring that back so we can have Mr. Maxxey just present that again.
Yeah, and I can send out the proposal that, uh, council previously approved and kind of the scope of work is a refresher because it has been a little while since you all, you know, took a look at that. And, um, and, you know, some of that work is, is kind of, uh, in fact, just today, I received an updated kind of, um, you know, survey reports of, of the area and have to review that. And so we gotta regroup, uh, based on the findings of that and take a look at, uh, you know, plans from here. So more to come certainly, but I'll make sure and send you a scope of work reminder on that.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Great, thanks. That takes us to, um, Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Um, Dan Fox, you're up for Fire District.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Dan Fox. Uh, I'm also representative to the Fire District Administration Board. Maybe he's gonna put up the first slide. Uh, the picture chosen here is the, like, two of the firefighters as well as the officer from Douglas Police Department at the, back it up, yeah, thank you, at the, uh, at Douglas Elementary, doing, uh, two things with those kids and I'm not sure of the grade age. Maybe a parent closer to their ages could tell them what age those girls and boys are. Um, but the two subjects were ice safety and memorizing their addresses. We talked about that before. You see the girl's got her hands immersed in ice and they, they have, they do that for a very short period of time, but the point is to realize the loss of dexterity and how quickly, how quickly that happens where you to, your whole body to be in ice, what have you. Anyway, one of the events of the past two weeks or so. Um, for tonight, next one, Jamie? Uh, it'll be generally brief. Um, a couple of things, at least one thing I forgot to put, or I guess forgot to put on, on the list. A mayor sent me a note to which I responded, then there were other responses back and forth. And I'm not sure you all are, are privy to them as it related to, um, the, uh, issue that came before this body at, I guess, at the workshop from a resident regarding, uh, IFC regulations as to constructing a driveway or whatever. Um, suffice to say, there were a number of, to be kind, errors of fact in what was presented to this council. And if you want, I'm not gonna go through them, but, uh, I don't know if you have them, but Ryan certainly has them because the chief came back with quite an extensive, quite an extensive list. And just, and I know the comment was made by the, by the citizen about wanting to go to the Planning Commission with this or whatever. Plan Commission, as you said, has no, no deal. They're, they're not involved in the Fire District. The Fire District has its own Appeals Board, uh, to which any appeal can be made as normally. We don't particularly like having lots of those because they're expensive when you start getting attorneys on both sides and all the rest of it. But that's how complaints about inspections or, or requirements for buildings or whatever, that's how, as it relates to fire issues, safety issues, that's how they're, they should be handled. So with that, um, there are no monthly statistics to present because the, uh, November ones, you've already seen, they were in the data that was in the last meeting when I was not here, when I was in Cincinnati or wherever I was. Um, so if I'm perfectly willing to answer any questions now or at any point about those or get an answer for you if, if I don't have it. But that was the full, it was a little different format. It was just straight as opposed to a million graphs. So, um, this one is an item of interest. If you hadn't watched over the weekend or your YouTube feed is different from my YouTube feed. There was a really sad and quite spectacular fire on another lakefront community on the other side of the lake in the U.P., uh, the House of Luddington. You look at the next one, I say historic. I mean, this is, the building goes back the first part of the century, if I'm not mistaken. Lovely. And it was still in operation as a hotel or at least partially. And bottom floor, I know had, uh, a not, really nice bar and what have you. Saturday, this is how it looked. Uh, first thing in the morning, apparently. The apparent, as, I mean, I'm not an expert on this, but what I read online was that there was restoration being done. Fire somehow got an electrical, old fashioned electrical wiring, like we may have seen in our youth, but that was what was in the building and some of that was being addressed. Anyway, the fire started between, what you see there is the top floor and the area above the top floor, attic type, and apparently kept going for some time as fires, if you've watched Backdraft, the movie, it, it, that actually happens. And the, so the fire got a really good head start before it exploded out of there. Greg Janik said two firefighters, no one was injured, no one was, there were no casualties in this. Greg said two firefighters, there was a, a blowback, so like a, a flash where the fire suddenly gets a, a share of oxygen it shouldn't have, and blew two firefighters down a stairway who were on their way up. But they're tough, I guess, because they were not, they were not injured. So you can see the fire there and there's another couple of pictures here that, uh, in, this is where they had it basically under control. And the next one, I wanted to make one point on because it's come up, I don't think anybody in the room, but I have heard it from time to time, uh, questions about, you know, geez, that ladder truck would cost a million dollars literally to replace and do we really need a ladder truck? Most of the buildings in town, yada, yada, yada. There are two operating on this fire as there would be on buildings in this town if they went up. I'm not gonna name which buildings those might or might not be. Um, and if we had that situation, that's where we'd get mutual aid because Grass Cap has a, also has a ladder truck or a aerial platform, whatever you call it. If you watch the video, I don't know how many gallons of water they poured on that thing. And, and there were five, five hose sites, including the two platforms, just pouring constantly water on it. And apparently it's gonna be a total loss. That, the part of the roof collapsed, whatever. So.
Total loss, they're not gonna redo it?
Say again?
A total loss, they're not gonna repair it or?
That I don't, I mean, I, it's pretty fresh. So I don't know that they even know whether, or whether it can be partially restored or just, you know, who do I know? But to me, the back part of it, which is clearly not as historic as the front part of it, it doesn't clearly, maybe there's some way you can split the difference and keep some of that. It's a very pretty building. I've been bad at it some times, really unusual. I don't like some of the buildings here in town. So, uh, and the next one, I, I'll admit to being a, a bit of a grinch on this, but I, I will be seen probably as a grinch on these. These are the, uh, special events costs which the district monitors. Salary and benefits for our employees by event. No apparatus costs, no, you know, wear and tear on equipment, no fuel costs. None of, there's nothing, that's not included in any of this. But what you see is, you know, any layers through right now, it's a significant expense for the Fire District, $20,000, $20,000. Um, you'll also notice some of my friends on the three community Fire District Board have noted that somewhere north of about 84% of that is sited in Sagatuck. Uh, none in the township. There are no, there are no events of that ilk in the township. And in the case of Douglas, their biggest sort of event is the Halloween Parade. And in, and I, I'm not sure of the mechanics of it. I'm not sure of the organization of it. It's not city, I think it's city authorized, but I don't think it's city funded, except there are safety precautions and whatever. But that, they reimbursed to us for that, for the cost of that. Um, as I say, I don't, no one's suggesting for an instant, no one, certainly not the Fire Chief, suggesting that our district has no place in many of these events. All of these events, some of them are open to question as to whether the sponsors of that event, those who conduct the event, which are not the city or the, for example, I don't know who, I don't want to pick on anyone, but I certainly from the podium shouldn't, but there are some of these that are privately run events. Those events, part of the event signup should be provisions for transferring the costs, significant costs, uh, that the Fire District has to the event, to, to, to the event organizer. So it's there for you to look at and making no proposal or, nor am I asking you all to, so.
I have a question. So on the Memorial Day Parade, you got a cost of, I can't quite see it, 500 and something. So is that for an extra person to come in and cover the, the person that's now in the parade?
No, these are costs directly related to the parade. So.
But wouldn't they be working any day anyway? Aren't these people that are on staff being paid daily? So is this a double hit? So we're paying for them if they'd been at the firehouse, but now we're gonna pay a double?
Certainly applies to a number of these events. I don't think that applies to all of the events. In a number of cases, some of the numbers where the numbers are much higher, people are being brought in to do this.
Which I could see this ever think.
Fire District vehicles, uh, at and involved in the Christmas parade. And it is, I think you probably saw, it's not an ideal situation because at the Christmas parade or during it or right before, I don't know exactly, um, the sheriff's police squad car that was at the front of the parade had to respond to a felony call. And I, I saw it go by going up Holland Street to get wherever it was going. Okay, automatically, that blocking function no longer existed. So, and that can happen. And if there's a fire and there are five trucks there and four of them have to go, they go. I mean, number one is to respond. So, but as I say, I think there's probably some way good minds could take a look and figure out. Uh, as I say, I don't really want to put it on anybody. Um, but $2,500 for the Mount Bald Head Challenge. Let's try, let's do that one because it's kind of an egregious, egregious, uh, deal. Um, that's a fundraiser or whatever they do with it. That $2,500 is a lot of money. That's a lot of time, a lot of people, a lot of equipment engaged in safety and so on and so forth. Should, does that, does that expense rightfully belong in sort of non-equal pro-rata shares to the three districts that fund the Fire District? That's for yourself.
I, I don't want to put words in Council Peterson's mouth, but I think what she's asking, I'm asking the same thing, is it would be really helpful to understand what's incremental, right? Versus, this is clearly a cost allocation. So how much of it is incremental about, uh, above your standard operations? And it could be higher because you don't have equipment costs and things like that. But if, if the suggestion here is at some point in time, costs need to be passed back, especially for events that might be on the borderline of being private, it would be good to understand what, you know, what's an incremental cost versus just a different, an allocated cost, right?
Well, uh, again, the ones that are highest in numbers, in, in raw numbers, will be the ones with the greatest incremental cost because, because whether you know it or not, there aren't 14 firemen sitting in that fire station all the time. I mean, they're just not there. So extra people are coming in and what have you. Also, and the chief is very quick to point out, he believes, and I certainly share this, that major, um, US holidays, Memorial Day, whatever, Labor Day, Fourth of July, I mean, that's not a problem, not an issue. It's, it's the ones that, because this list is, anybody who's been around, Gregory, you've been along, around here long enough, this list has grown fairly dramatically over the years. And part of the reason it grows is because.
Well, your participation has grown as well.
And they're getting it for free.
From all three communities.
Yeah.
Well, just another clarifying question. Um, it's hard to read, but, um, Fourth of July fireworks, Venetian boat parade, Mount Bald Head challenge, um, those all also take place in Douglas, do they not?
In parts, yes, sure.
Thanks.
Um, speaking to somebody on the committee for the, uh, Venetian, uh, event, I'm understanding that, and I could be wrong, but I'm understanding that the Venetian Boat Parade, uh, they're talking about having, not having it next year. Do you know the difference about what, what it costs for the parade versus the fireworks? Or you just don't know that right now? Because I mean, I'm thinking that might even be cut in half for next year. So.
That may be able to be separated out. I honestly don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. Sidewalk sale, another one, yeah.
One of them I don't see on here is the Douglas Oktoberfest. Is there support provided for that?
The Pride, um?
No, no. It's a different event.
Okay.
So just, just a point, but I think, so my position on this is that this is something for us to discuss, I think, as a policy for events, because you differentiate between a not-for-profit event versus an event that's raising money for another, you know, it, it, that, just generally speaking, and, and, and I think this is something that, um, reflects what, what Councilmember Muncie said, is that these have grown over time. And as you have said too, the costs, you know, there's a few questions on costs. I have the same questions that Councilmember Peterson and Clark have. You know, how would this calculate? Is, is it just incremental cost? Because just like you said with the, with the police, they were called off for a felony, um, pursuit, I believe is what it was. But I know that the fire trucks can be called off too during the parade and that's happened. Um, that doesn't stop the parade, but then again, is that what point is the cost then become, it's the thing that we're talking about. So I, 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 I think this is worth further discussion. And also, it, I believe in my mind, it ties into what the Department of Public Works has to provide from a, a staffing standpoint too. There is a community benefit here, of course, and I think there is some cost that the city should provide. However, given the complexity of the events and safety and everything else, I think it's worth having more discussion. What, what is the city's policy for events?
And I think too, you got, I think it, it, it bears a close look on, on events that, where it may be sponsored by a nonprofit, um, whether, as to whether that should exempt them from, doesn't exempt them from a number of other costs that they are absorbing, just not absorbing this cost. Also, just to be clear, in case somebody wonders, this isn't all about fire trucks lining up and being in a parade. Most of these relate to security and road blocking and.
Yeah. And, and like I said, you've had more participation in that than you did 10 years ago. Um, uh, I, I remember years of sidewalk sale. We didn't have that, uh, fire department here like we do now. Um, I was basically the one going from street to street, putting those barricades up and, uh, but, so I, I noticed there's a big increase the last five to 10 years.
To your point.
For, for safety reasons.
For reasons, unfortunately, that are present in society.
Right.
Island Park issue and plenty of others you can list off where stuff that was inconceivable, literally inconceivable, 10 years, eight years ago, you have to prepare for now, or at least try and prepare for. Sorry.
No, it's Town Cryer also ends in Douglas. It's not only in Sagatuck.
Right.
So there's a number of these events that are both Sagatuck and Douglas that, that's not reflective.
And to be honest, when we talk about Venetian Festival and we talk about some of these big events, uh, both towns are benefiting from them.
Township too.
And the township as well, correct. Uh, as far as their Airbnbs, their, uh, our inns, uh, businesses. Um, so these bigger events are.
Well, I know, I, nobody's suggesting like pro-rating these things out across that chart, for example, for the very reason you said, area events, events in Sagatuck benefit an area larger than just the city. So that's understood. Now, the power with the numbers, yeah. Um, and then just the chief's recommendation for your holiday festivities. Watch the extension cords, watch where they run, how many there are, so on and so forth. Those things, trees go up quick. That's it.
Thanks, Stan.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate that.
Uh, Gregory, Inner Urban Board.
We haven't had a new meeting since I last reported at our last council meeting, uh, but I will reiterate that we've, um, are working with the community on aging rides. And I'm very, uh, happy to hear that, uh, Inner Urban has partnered with, uh, COA, that's Community on Aging, uh, to provide medical rides for people outside of our, uh, area here. So, um, and, uh, and, uh, that, uh, we are being reimbursed from, uh, the COA at $37 per hour, about the cost per hour to rent, uh, a, uh, inner urban bus, uh, for folks that do it for events or whatever. Um, Becky was in the last couple, uh, Christmas parades. I saw her at the Fenville, the Light Parade. I've never gone to that. That looks like a lot of fun. Uh, that's where they have it at night and, uh, they're all lit up. She also participated in our Christmas parade as well. Um, we had a article in the Holland Sentinel just a couple of days ago that talked about our numbers that went up, um, and that we are. and that we are constantly improving, or I mean, constantly growing with ridership. Also wanted to mention that we have broken ground and we are working right now on the, the, the expansion of our building, which I've talked about. Our next meeting will be held at Douglas City Hall, I believe. We haven't decided yet, but I'm pretty sure that's where it's going, that will be announced in plenty of time. And our next meeting is a week from, a week from tomorrow.
Any questions for Greg? Okay, Joe, Cal Lake.
Yeah, thank you, not, not a lot. We did have a special meeting last week. Made some really good progress on establishing bylaws for the Cal Lake Board. Believe we should be voting on them on our next meet, meeting, which is Monday. So hope to have those done, complete and out of the way. We also got an update from our hiring committee. Have a number of candidates in the pipeline now. We'll actually be going to closed session on Monday to, to review the seven, I believe, seven or eight resumes that we have gotten from Frank Walsh. And hopefully, hopefully be moving that process right along. So more to come after our regular meeting on Monday.
Thanks, Chris, you have a meeting tomorrow?
Yes, I'm so excited. We have a meeting at six o'clock, I'm just hoping we have a quorum.
I will hold a good thought.
Yeah.
ZBA, there's a ZBA meeting too coming up.
Thursday.
Okay. Historic Scott?
Yeah, we met last week. One item was five forty-six Butler looking to switch out a rotten French door in front of the property. That's still being discussed. More importantly, we are looking at the signs for Historic Historic. We gave the consultants some feedback, so they'll come back with some refined designs. I think the key on the Historic District signs is we've made it really clear among the commission that our remit is simply to designate, you know, the Historic District and not to lean into branding at all. Because as you know, we've got that down as new business, and so we're, we're trying to be careful not to get ahead of that. So, but continue to make progress on those signs. I think what's coming together looks really nice.
Oh, good.
Yeah, quite classy.
Great, Planning, Russ.
Next meeting is on Thursday, December eighteenth at six thirty PM.
Okay, Lauren's not here for PPW, Truck Community Motorized, anything Scott?
Nope.
Water Systems Operations Contract Advisory Committee?
All updates this week.
Gregory, Parking Improvements Task Force.
Yeah, we had our initial meeting on October twenty-eighth, and it went very well. We discussed our welcome and introductions, it was kind of an initial meeting. We talked about our project scope and work review, our project study review, identification of parking turnover and data collection. We kind of learned the process that Eric and the folks are going to do with us. We discussed parking issues and concerns that we'd all heard from business owners and residents. And also, of course, talked about alternative transportation. We also had the online survey discussion, which has been put together by our consultant group, Walker. And, and we will be reviewing that at our next meeting tomorrow at three PM. And I invite you to all to attend that as we go forward. There's a, there's a lot to, there's, there's a lot to uncover still, we're just starting. It's just our second meeting, but we foresee the, the survey going out shortly to everyone. There was the idea to have the survey out twice at the beginning and then at a midpoint or near the end of our studies. But you'll see that survey coming out shortly, and I invite you to come to our meeting tomorrow at three.
That takes us to approval of accounts payable.
Mayor, move to approve accounts payable in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-nine cents.
Roll call vote, or any questions before we do that?
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. No public hearings or unfinished business, which takes us to new business. Fourteen A, the proposal for planning of Elizabeth Street improvements. Thanks for being with us, Scott.
Thank you very much. Just kind of building off of our conversation last week that we had at the workshop meeting. You know, as Manager Cummins mentioned, we're, we're getting ready to go to the bidding phase of Maple Street, and these projects take quite a bit of time, so we're not all too early to start on Elizabeth Street. And, and that's the proposal that is in front of you this evening. We do have some, some dollars budgeted for the, this current fiscal year for the planning and design phase, at least of Elizabeth Street. So according to CIP, the total project cost is estimated to be about a million and a half, which includes road resurfacing or reconstruction, sidewalk repairs and extensions, storm sewer repairs and replacements, water main extension, replacement, and sanitary sewer repairs. On November thirteenth, public work staff were, walked the, the whole length of the street with Fleece and Vanderbrink, and just to get some preliminary discussions going on, on the scope of the project. And what we discovered on that walk was that there's some complexities to it, particularly related to the sidewalk. You know, we heard loud and clear from our master plan survey that, you know, non-motorized pathways are really important to the community. And in the case of Elizabeth Street, that i- if we were to install some sidewalks in areas where there currently are none, it's going to be some dramatic overhaul in some cases. So for that reason, we're recommending more of a planning phase, especially similarly to what we did for Maple Street, maybe not quite as extensive. But really just taking some extra steps to generate that input from the community on what it is that, that we all want in the finished product of this. So in the scope of the, the proposal before you from Fleece and Vanderbrink, this includes topograph, a topographic survey. They targeted that to be late November, early December. They quoted, hopefully before the snow flies, so unfortunately for them, that did not happen. But maybe the snow will hold off for a little while so we can get some of that survey work done. Soil borings, infrastructure evaluation and conceptual design, and some, some meetings planned. So planning first half of two thousand and twenty-six. Design would take place the second half of two thousand and twenty-six and then bidding late two thousand and twenty-six or early two thousand and twenty-seven, similarly to what we're doing with Maple Street right now. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes. Madam Mayor, thank you. Give me an idea of dramatic change that you're talking about.
If, if you look at, the one that jumps out to me, the most dramatic, would probably be in between Allegan Street and Mason Street. Along the east side of Elizabeth, we have a really old oak tree canopy on that first block. There's a lot of elevation changes, driveway approaches, you know, so to fit a sidewalk in on, on that section of the street would require some overhaul.
Russ?
There, thank you, there's a, there's a sidewalk on the west side of Elizabeth there, right?
Partially, it goes from Mason Street.
Yeah, such as the driveway.
Out toward of Allegan.
Right, yeah, so they've got a little gap there between the driveway to the condos and then Allegan. Yeah, the interesting thing about that street is you go down, you have to cross, and then you have to cross again, and then you have to cross again. So is that something that's going to try to be corrected, or at least is the thought process behind it?
Yeah, it depends, I mean, this is the, the, exactly the content that we're searching, that we're seeking out right now. You know, it, it's going to connect, I'm sure, in some way, shape or form. But that means that we have to pour some additional, you know, concrete aprons and, and connect sidewalk that way. It might not just be, you know, both sides of the street, there's sidewalk going from coast to coast, you know, meaning from Allegan Street to Francis Street. But there likely be, you know, a couple crosswalks along the way.
So is it, maybe, maybe ask a better question for John. So is the current thought on, on instruction on this, to have sidewalks all on one side of the street or have pedestrians crossing like it is today? That's probably not the approach they want to take because of increased safety issues, right? Or you, you don't know.
There, there's a lot of options that, that we could consider. You know, we could reduce the width of Elizabeth Street and try to make some more room for sidewalk that way. It is a pretty wide road. You know, there's, it, it just depends, you know, some spots there, in my mind, you know, like, like the, the block that you had referred to, where it's just a small section that might require a retaining wall or something like that to connect the sidewalk, that makes complete sense to me. You know, there's another one just north of Main Street. You know, like the sidewalk in front of the tennis courts, that also just kind of goes to nowhere. There's really one property that that needs to, to go through to be able to, to connect in that location, so.
Good. And as you know, that strength, or that, pardon me, that length of Elizabeth between Allegan and the school itself gets repeated reports of speeding and just bad behavior by drivers. I think this is a great opportunity to talk about a couple of things, right? Encourage the use of non-vehicle transportation by bike lanes, as you suggested. But number two is, try to think about some, I think they're called table speed bumps. I think this is a great opportunity to put in something that's not going to be a true speed bump like you would normally see, like on Park Street or anything like that. But more of, they're, they're called tables, and that could actually be incorporated into the sidewalk plan to have people actually have to slow down and go over. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about, this concept? I think that's definitely something that, that we should be talking about. How do we actually plan to reduce the speed, traffic calming, whatever you want to call it, on that stretch of that road without having it look like it's, you know, engineered to be a, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know, I know, I already had a preliminary conversation with the safety director at the high school, or at Sagittak Public Schools, Brett Enfield. You know, he, he had mentioned, at least during those peak traffic hours, school hours, lunchtime, just have some sort of maybe flashing pedestrian crossing signs in front of the high school. That all, also traffic calming measure.
Yeah, I'd love to see us get creative and, you know, have some things that are maybe a little bit less intrusive, I don't know what word I'm looking for here, but something that really wouldn't catch your attention, but actually you have to slow down to go over, and that's why the table speed bumps. There's something I've run across that seemed to work pretty well in these kind of environments, so anyway, just food for thought.
They, they kind of, they do in some cases, but we've also done, you know, the city has paid some money to do some traffic studies over on Park Street. And what they discovered, at least the report that we got back from Fleece and Vanderbrink, was that people actually speed up. They'll slow down for those speed humps or bumps.
Speed between.
And then they'll accelerate rapidly in between them. So the people that live in the middle of those two speed bumps, they're, they're kind of getting the ren, engines revving and faster traffic in those locations, so.
Yeah, looking forward to further discussion of that.
Are those a challenge for snow removal, having those built in?
I would think that.
I would think they would be.
Take a toll.
Yeah.
Yeah, being hit repeatedly.
Right.
Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah. Motion to approve the proposed, proposal submitted by Fleece and Vanderbrink Engineering to assist with Elizabeth Street Improvement Plan in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Any further questions?
Just one, one thing, I'm assuming that there's some lead service lines in addition to those mains, those lead and galvanize that we'll, we'll take care of with this project.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Good.
Great, it's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Sagittak Harbor Natural Area Invasive Species Management, Scott?
Yeah, just kind of, I'll hit the highlights. I know we talked about it on Wednesday, but there were several council members that were not at the meeting. So just to kind of recap where we left off. Twenty twenty-four, the Land Conservancy of West Michigan, they, they put together a management plan for the Sagittak Harbor Natural Area. The, the, the big takeaways from that, that report were invasive species, trail assessment and monitoring as areas of interest. The PPW Committee, along with city staff, worked to really put a plan together that would complement that, that recommendation. And so we had reached out to PLM, Lakeland and Management Corporation, the Kalamazoo Nature Center and the Outdoor Discovery Network, and then worked to, to put a scope of work together for what we'd like to see for that property. Ultimately selected the ODC to, to go with. It seemed like they made the most sense to help us out with some invasive treatments management in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, trail assessment in the amount of five thousand dollars, and ecological evaluation for ten thousand dollars, and then invasive species surveying through two thousand and twenty-seven in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. So just to make notes, property does have an endowment as a funding mechanism. As of June, our treasurer reported that the balance, the, the fund balance for that account, the part that we cannot touch, is eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. We currently, due to a lack of spending, we currently have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we could put to use at the moment, and that account is generating around thirty thousand dollars of revenue per year, so.
Thanks, Scott. Questions before we get a motion?
Yeah, yeah, Madam Mayor, I would, as we get to the motion, I'm in support of this. I think we should have in the motion, just to make sure that, and the budget action required, that we just make it clear that this money is coming from the National Harbor Area Endowment as opposed to the General Fund of the City or the Parks Fund of the City. Just to make that clear.
Well, yeah, and, and essentially, yes, that, that's what will occur, but what will happen is the endowment will come in as revenue into the general fund.
Right.
And then there will be expense out of the general fund, but essentially it'll be, you know, you know, revenue offsetting the expense. But it is going to go through our general fund, so I wouldn't want to be limited to not using general fund dollars because that's how we're going to have to, to pay for it.
Thank you, so, so the process to get the money from the endowment, is that an application to the, the fund holder?
Yeah, it's not even like an application, we just have to, you know, submit the, the documents. They, they check it against the agreement to make sure we're expending it on, on, you know, things that are proper under the, the agreement and, and, and then they would, yeah, cut us a check, so.
Okay, so just, just for notification then, that this money will be coming from that endowment, the access in the endowment that is for use at this, at this park, so.
Yep, and I think we set up the budget, I think we did set up some revenue to come in under like miscellaneous to offset the, the expense dollars that we had shown in the budget on here too.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Would you like to make motion, Russ?
Sure, motion to approve the proposal submitted by the Outdoor Discovery Center Network in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars for invasive species management, trail assessment, ecological evaluation, and invasive species survey work.
Okay.
Any further questions before we vote? It's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carries. Your Honorable Scott, dock repairs and maintenance.
Hey, we might as well keep spending money.
Ouch.
Yeah, I know. Money, money well spent, but I, I think it was in the, during the summer, the, the dock master from Sergeant Marina had reached out to Manager Cummins and, and highlighted that, that there's some maintenance needs over at the transient slips that the city leases out to, to Sergeant for the summer. So we took a look at the, the overall condition of them, and then we also had some damage that had occurred over at the shopper dock in the meantime, and so we had had, reached out to, to a couple different companies. There, there's not a lot of companies that do marine construction in the area, but there are a couple that you see their barges constantly. So we had reached out to the King Company, they really specialize more in dredging and seawall work. And then they're all, I think they had even said that if, if, if they were to hire King Company, they would sub it out to DK Construction anyway. These, these companies work pretty closely together. So DK is a little more geared towards dock repairs, which is the work that we're looking for today, so. Ju- just note, just because of the, the unique nature of marine construction and then having some local businesses in the area anyway, you know, we did add a note on the, in the motion just to waive the, the need for competitive bidding, if, if you're comfortable with that on this one. But the scope of work consists of the repairing the shopper dock, the end posts are in need of some repair, and then they're also dented or bent at this point. And then some of the, the posts that are, that are along the main part of the dock, they're in need of some, some four-inch steel extensions just to make sure that, that dock doesn't lift off the sleeves that those posts ride in, so. The total for the shopper dock is seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Our treasurer does currently have an insurance claim that she's working on since that, that was damaged, that was presumably caused by a boat. Then the transient slips, it breaks it down, you know, dock forty-eight, forty-nine, there's a pylon that's, that's deteriorated, estimated to be over thirty years old. Dock fifty, fifty-one, there's six pylons and then three spring piles. Dock fifty-two and fifty-three, this one, it, it's not critical as far as functionality. It's just, it's more of a, an aesthetic thing. There's an old floating dock underneath our, our city dock, so it, it doesn't look great. That's serving no function at the moment, and so while we have a company there, we'd, we'd like to clean that up. So the total for the transient slips is twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we also noticed that due to those freezing and thawing events with, with river ice, two of the posts over at the Willow Park Deck have become dislodged slightly, which caused the deck to be unlevel. So the plan for that would be that DK would take the railing off, drive the posts back down, level the deck, and then reinstall the railing. And then that would be a total of one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, so. All in, we're at thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, all in, we're at $33,725. And the current fiscal year budget does include $65,000 for seawall pilings and board rock repairs.
Great. Any questions before we get a motion? Chris?
Madam Mayor, I move to the waive the competitive bidding due to the unique circumstances in the staff memo, and approve the proposal submitted by DK Construction, Inc., to repair the shopper dock, transient slips, and Willow Park Deck in the amount of $33,725.
I'll second.
Great, uh, anything else before we vote? Roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Michelle. Um, that takes us to 14D, the Logo and Branding Refresh Project. Um, Ryan, would you want to step this up for us briefly? I know we talked about it.
Yeah, yeah, we, we touched on it on Wed- on, uh, on Wednesday, that, uh, I think we're, uh, my recommendation is that we, um, uh, take on a, a branding and, and logo refresh project. Uh, the last logo was created in 2007, and, um, some of your priorities involve, um, looking at signage and wayfinding and updating our website. In order to kind of move ahead with those priorities, I think, uh, it's, it's wise for us to, uh, maybe update or, or refresh our logo and branding before, uh, which will really kind of inform those, those, those future phases. So I'm recommending that, uh, that the city council consider forming a, a branding advisory committee. We discussed the, the potential membership of that group, uh, at the last meeting, uh, as well as I'm recommending issuing a request for proposals to seek a firm to actually help us do the, the design work itself.
Any questions for Ryan before we vote?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, the only, uh, question I have is, and I don't, maybe it's in the RFP, is there, is there a, uh, timeline on this in terms of when we expect to hear back from the group?
Yeah, so, uh, the way it's kind of set up right now, we have a timeline to at least, uh, you know, bring a firm on board, and then part of, I think, the evaluation will be, um, looking at the firm and kind of what timeline they're proposing, and, and how we can, you know, move this project along. So I don't think it'll be a real long project, probably before the end of the, the fiscal year, um, you know, being complete, but, um, I didn't set a specific timeframe, because I kind of wanted to see what, what came back in the proposals.
Okay, I'm just kind of curious to see this get done quickly, so.
All right, uh, can I get a motion? On page... I don't want to do it because I'm wanted. Oh, okay.
Motion to issue a request for proposals for the Logo and Branding Refresh Project. Form a Branding Advisory Committee, suspend the Board and Commission's selection policy for the committee, and appoint Chris Peterson, Lauren Stanton, Ryan Cummins, Tim Straker, and Kristen Armstrong to the committee.
Second.
Anything else?
Yeah, real quick, do, do we, and I, I remember we did set money aside for this. What was the budget we have for this?
So the, uh, there's a line item in the budget at, uh, total $125,000 total for contractual services for a variety of different projects. So the, the parking task force took up a, a good chunk of that. Um, branding and logo work was also kind of included within that, that, that group of funds, so, um, you know, I'm confident that I think we'll, we'll see a, a proposal that, that will still stay within the, the budget on those line items.
And what was that budget again?
$125,000. So minus, I think it was like $82.5 or something.
Minus $82.5?
Yeah, right around that.
Okay, thank you.
So, not that I'm anticipating using all of that on this, I hope no firms are listening and thinking, backs that out. So, uh, I mean, that, those dollars, we're also hoping to go for some other purposes too. Obviously we'll have to kind of see where we're at when.
Right.
Get proposals.
Thank you.
Great, anything else? Roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chris, for serving on that committee.
You bet, thanks for asking.
Um, last, under new business is inflation adjustments to staff wage scale. Ryan, that's, begins on page 65 of our packet.
Yeah, Mayor, just, uh, briefly, um, looking at, or asking the city council to consider some, uh, inflationary adjustments to grades two through eight, uh, which are all the, the city, um, positions, full-time positions, at least, except for, uh, mine and our, uh, frontline DPW, uh, maintenance and equipment operator positions, that would, uh, be in a 3% increase, um, which is, you know, spread around, I mean, the, the Federal Reserve's indicating that inflation's near, you know, 3%. I think their kind of key measure just came out, at least year over year, September to September, we're, they were looking at about 2.8%, excluding food and, and fuels. Social Security is looking at a, a 2.8% uh, increase, and then the, uh, inflation rate multiplier that you'll see actually on, um, taxes, uh, will be 2.7%. Um, so asking for 3%, which is right around where I think we're at, uh, on that. And then for grade one, which is our, our DPW maintenance and equipment operator positions, it's kind of a combination of, uh, an inflationary increase, as well as, uh, kind of taking a look at the, the market for wages for that position and trying to, uh, bump those up a little bit to be a little bit more, uh, competitive. So I'm recommending a 6% increase there.
You know, we talked about this at the workshop, but any further questions or comments before we vote, Russ?
Yeah, I'd just add that, um, just for those that weren't at the meeting on Wednesday, is that the bump for the, uh, grade one reflects just the competitive marketplace that we have for attracting quality candidates and retaining quality candidates for that particular role. Then the, uh, 3% increase is just keeping pace with the economy. Um, you know, the city of Sagittuck is a good place to work for, and so we need to pay those wages to be able to attract candidates to come to town. And I've heard that we've gotten some really good candidates and new hires recently, so, um, this is just supporting that effort.
Yeah, 3% is the standard right now. That's, uh, that's what we just, uh, gave our employees at the inner urban. We just increased ours as well. So we do that every year.
All right, so roll call vote.
Uh, we need a motion.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve a 3% inflation adjustment to grades two to eight, through eight of the staff. Of the staff, step in wage scale and a 6% adjustment to grade one, effective for the pay period starting December 27th, 2025.
Second.
All right, now we have a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, that takes us to the second public comment period. Uh, anyone, if there's anyone in the room, anyone online wish to make a public comment? This can be about anything. All right, seeing none, um, that takes us to, uh, closed session. Can I get a motion to go into closed session? Madam Mayor?
Yeah. I move that we, uh, move into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268E to consult with legal counsel regarding trial or settlement strategy regarding a complaint to vacate White Alley, caption Bradley D. Lidgard and Gabrielle E. Lidgard versus the City of Sagittuck, case number 25-71294-CH, and pursuant to MCL 15.268H to discuss a confidential written legal opinion from the city attorney.
Second.
Gardner?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?